Twenty-two, six-thirty P M. In the city council room. All members of the council are present, with the exception of Mr. Charbonneau, who is not here as of yet. Others include Assistant Clerk Treasurer Stacy Tarian and our City Manager Laura Dogen. The next item is to approve the minutes of March twenty-first.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
A motion to be made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Bashan. Discussion on the minutes of March twenty-first. None of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Stacy, do you have a copy to sign? The official?
Oh, the you.
The minutes?
I don't know what I do. I don't think, no.
Well, I can pop in tomorrow. It'll be okay.
Okay, I'll get a.
I'll do it tomorrow. The council approved it. It'll be okay.
Just plug down on this desk.
Okay. And then we'll need a motion to approve the, whoops, I'm looking at my minutes here. We need a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. There is one correction. Mr. Wilson is the president of the council. Not Ms. Patterson, and so that's just the one correction which we can correct tomorrow when I know. So we need a motion to approve those minutes with the change. So, motion made by Mr. Bashan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on that? Hearing none of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is comments from members of the public. Nobody has signed up for that, so we will move on. The next item is the Newport Development Funds and Discover Newport Funds update. We have Tim Tierney, Director of the Business Recruitment and International Trade with the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development.
Hi, everybody.
How you doing?
So it's a personal difference, right?
Let's see. My glasses. Yeah, at a council meeting, just give your history. Some questions were raised about the fund.
Well aware.
And I mailed you, I think, what was raised at that meeting, some of the questions and.
Yes.
I just thought maybe, maybe give a little history of the fund, you know, just a little history.
I was gonna start with like, just really the process, right, from where it started.
Yeah, that's, that's great, yes.
So, I mean, obviously, everybody was aware here of what happened with the EB5 scandal. And then there was the court order from the Kiro settlement, which I'm not aware of. All the properties, whether it's properties in Burke and Linden and Coventry, some other ones were sold, and all the proceeds, the courts said, were to go to the Northeast Kingdom. The governor said, no, let's give all those funds to the city of Newport. That being said, the Agency of Commerce and the Department of Economic Development, where I work for, which we seem to be the main grantor for the state. I mean, we oversee about twenty different grant programs. I personally oversee five grant programs. So it was tasked for myself to actually create a grant program from the criteria set forth by my commissioner and my Secretary of Commerce, who wanted to include regional representation and local representation, which is unique, because sometimes we just do the grant reviews within our department ourselves. I mean, our colleagues that helped me review this oversee the State Trade Expansion Program grants. We do the CDBG grants, the Community Development Block Fund grants. We do the Downtown Enviolization grants. Also, the Brownfield grants. I mean, everyone in our team are grant, I would say, great grant administrators, so.
Someone else is just joining.
No, it works. So that, that being said, we want to set up a program together with the city of Newport. We, Laura in particular, and I imagine the council, she ran things by you. And then with our Regional Economic Development Corporation, which is the Northern Vermont Development Association, right? So, we basically set up the criteria of what we wanted to do. It was basically a two-grant program was decided on by that, that group. And now, obviously, anything that was decided then had to get run by the governor's office for the final okay. So, we came up with a program for the Newport Development Grant Program, which was larger, minimum fifty thousand dollars with no maximum, for very impactful projects. Something that's gonna like retain jobs, create jobs, make a big impact. And also, the fact that wasn't impacted by the scandal itself was another major criteria. We also, and what came from our program was we had, there was a program in Middlebury, Vermont, where they ran a business competition. We saw how that, what a great little competition that was. It was lower amounts of money, and they used it to actually bring in new businesses in town or to help establish businesses. So, we actually convinced the commissioner, the secretary, and the governor that we would like to also have a smaller grant business competition. So that's what was finally decided, was the larger grant program, Newport Development Grant Program, and also the Discover Newport Business Competition. That being said, we said, we put together a letter of interest round. We notified people, they had to apply, and had a series of questions with, you know, what we're looking for, and there were two different letters of interest for each grant program. Through that letter of interest, a team from my agency of six people graded them through the criteria. We had the city of Newport, and we, NVDA was supposed to be the grantor, the reviewer, but because they were helping out an applicant, they recused themselves because of our conflict of interest statement, which was set forth on everything that we had right from the get-go. That there was any conflict of interest, either implied or that we felt like they need to bring and discuss it and bring it forth. We decided, they actually withdrew themselves from the reviewing process. So that being said, we brought in the Northern Community Investment Corporation, NCIC, another regional partner, to help review the larger grants. NVDA did do the business competition grants review, because there was no issues there. So we actually, like, I've got my glasses on for this. We had, from the Newport Development Fund, we had eleven applicants apply for the larger Newport Development Grant Program. We advanced five of those after grading them and actually compiling all the scores. That being said, the Newport, the Discover Newport Fund, the business competition, we had fifteen. Actually, fourteen, but we had a fifteenth person we let in because their, their grant got lost in our computer system. So we, they were allowed to advance because of that snafu. We had eight advanced from the Discover Newport. And from there, those people actually filled out full applications. With the Newport Development Grant Fund, the larger impactful ones, there was obviously more. We're, we're looking for more information based on the fact that what was the job retention? What was the growth? What was their business plan? What, what was their capital stack? That's a big one. What's the capacity of their organization? That's a really, what people don't realize, that like you can have a great concept, but if you're in early stages or your, your organization isn't formed and it doesn't have really good structure and governance, it's probably not ready. We don't want to put money out there that's gonna be sitting for five, ten years. We wanted some projects that were gonna be completed, that were gonna be done and make a difference in Newport as quickly as possible. So, you know, all those factors kind of led into how we decided to, to move some of these grant applications forward and why we decided how, how it was done. And again, you know, we do grants, that's what we do, and it was all done in a fair and equitable way. I mean, we know how, how this money was received, and we wanted to make sure that this was done in the most equitable way possible. I mean, we have cookies amounts of notes and decisions and why decisions were made and score, everyone's scoring and how, and how they scored in discussion therein, so. That being said, people did submit for the Newport Development Grant Fund, the five, all five submitted, and we awarded three. And the three, as you know, are the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation for the Wagner Building, for the purchase and rehabilitation. We also, seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars to the Northeast Kingdom Tasting Center for building renovations and rehabilitation. And also, the other thing's already, Tangway Homes, which is building up to eighteen homes here in Newport. And basically, we always to basically start the, the beginning infrastructure for allow them to, to build those homes. So, that was, and that total there was one million four hundred eight thousand five hundred dollars for those three.
Could I just ask one thing?
Yes.
Since you're right there.
Yep, no problem.
Timeline on the awardee, like, say I got awarded like Tangway Homes. Do they have a timeline, that they have a great round, you know, over?
Sure. So, I mean, basically, we're, we're giving them eighteen months from the day of the award, which was February fourth, we notified everybody, and so they're gonna have eighteen months. So I believe that's August fourth through twenty-twenty-three. And obviously, they're gonna remain in communication if something stalled or nailed or something changes in their scope of work, they're gonna let us know. So I mean, it's not like, so I think a lot of them want to get all these projects done as quickly as possible.
Right, right. So eighteen months, okay, good.
And in the Discover Newport, the business competition, which had a maximum of twenty thousand dollars award, I said we had fifteen applied LOI, we had advanced eight, six submitted. So two did not finish the application for the final round, and we awarded four. And a lot of those were obviously some interesting projects, but a lot of it was the fact that some people really surprised us with the quality of their application. One big factor was, you guys have created a lot of great plans here and adopted city plans, municipal plans, downtown plans, waterfront plans, and people had to tie their, what they're trying to do to those plans, and you could tell people put their homework in. That means we feel they're gonna do a better job with what they're trying to attempt. It wasn't cut and paste, it was, they put their effort in to the, the grant application itself. And we did award four of those, and a lot of them making renovations or actually bringing in other businesses within their business, trying to grow here downtown or create signage for places or move into a new facilities. There was a whole array of projects. And obviously, there were some projects here that, like all our projects, there's always people that are denied. And, I mean, I do the Northern Border Regional Commission grants, which up till last year, and I, we had sixty applicants, and we awarded twelve, right? So, but that being said, we try to reach out to applicants who ask for help or where they could need help or how come they didn't receive it. So that is something that we are more than happy to do. I've already done it here for some applicants. It's like, with the, you know, whether it's their capacity or their, the clarity of their application or maybe where they can go look for, to get advanced for capital, like, they're just two early stages. One example is, we actually had some people apply for both, and we denied them with the larger one, and we gave them feedback, and they actually really did a great job and corrected it, and they were awarded the second one. So I mean, they, they listened and made some changes, so that's great to see. And, and on the Discover Newport grant, we actually had every applicant fill out a business plan. That was it. A lot of them had not, some of them had not done this before. So even though they were denied, they have a business plan. I mean, they, this is a good thing that came out of this grant application. So, I mean, that's, that's what you really want, right? So, in that activity, we feel like it, it did serve some good to a lot of these folks, actually plan and create a plan, so.
Were all the funds awarded or is it?
No, there's actually, we have forty thousand, we have forty thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Seventy-one cents, wait, odd, an odd number.
So, I mean, that was basically, the, the Kiro Settlement Fund has one million five hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents, and we've awarded, like, we never awarded two hundred and fifteen, yeah, two hundred and ten cents. But that being said, that one is there, and there's more money coming into that from the Stanger Settlement, there's still some more coming in there. But that is gonna decide whether or not there'll be another round or whether or not, I mean, it's, we will talk to the governor's office, what they feel like doing with that money, and also, you know, asking here, you know, what might be the best help to Newport City. That's what I will ask for, so, let's see what we can help with that. But overall, I mean, I think we should be, I mean, we're excited that we think we made some really great decisions on what can have real impactful transitional projects for the city of Newport. And it's gonna make a difference, and it's nice to have out of something bad that something good can come here to town. And, and, I mean, that's it, we're, we're excited, and I hope we move forward with all these projects. And I, we know we're getting calls from, for instance, Tangway Homes, we were, we were really liked that application. They really did us homework, and then we thought, you know, this is very different for us to actually have a home contractor do, but it was like, wow, that impact is gonna create a tax base for Newport for a very low amount of money. Return on investment is gonna be huge. We looked at his reputation and what he does, and he does it for middle income. So I mean, you know, we do our homework and vet these people as well to make sure that we're giving out the, to the correct places and, and that they were permitted, we make sure, you know, that they know that they need to do, follow all the steps as well. So it wasn't just handing out money. We want people to have, finish these projects, succeed with these projects, and do it. And I know we felt real confident that we do have all of those.
So you had six people in your office reviewing it?
Yes.
So probably about ten total, because the city manager, six in your office, and you said NCIC, which I'm assuming was just probably Mike, probably Mike Welch, whoever in this office. Yeah, just so, so it's probably around ten total reviewing each application. So everybody had a scoring sheet, I'm assuming?
We had a scoring sheet, and we actually, you know, some were weighted, some, some questions are weighted because they're more important than others. Obviously, the, the economic impact and job creation and job retention are big. And it also has to be realistic, right? I mean, we, we know some people, like, oh, it's gonna create a thousand jobs, like.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, people had realistic, yeah, I mean, all those. I mean, it was very well thought out, and people put a lot of time and effort into grading it, and I think thoughtfully as well. So I mean, as with anything, I mean, this isn't taxpayers' money. This is one of the first times we're not handing out taxpayers'. But regardless, we want this, we want projects that are gonna happen, and we want projects that we can go back and feel good and justify why we decided on those projects, so.
Questions from council members?
So I got a sticky question.
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I had someone ask me if documents were, like, could they see the documents or the scoring and things like that? And I said, I didn't know, and I said, I didn't know as grant programs, if that was a different set of rules, you know, for public records requests, I just.
Sure, yeah, and I think, I mean, I'm more than happy to share that with anyone. I can go ask our legal counsel about that, I might, but, yeah, it's probably the boring documents you'll ever see, but they, they're more than happy to see them, right? So, and we know that, you know, some people, I mean, it happens with all our grants, right? Some people just, it's, I mean, they, they, they're not happy with the outcome, but it's just the reality of it, is, there was good reasons behind it, and so, right?
Said I'd ask.
Yep, no, I get that, and more than happy to, I mean, it's really, it's all there.
So if somebody wanted, they would, they would contact you?
We'll probably redact names on it, so that, that, that might be the, because you don't wanna, it's a small town, right? So.
Right, I mean, I'm assuming, like, if someone wanted to see the scoring sheets, but you could take the names off.
Yeah, and you know, and with our, with our agency, we, we review them, and then we cumulative scores, and I brought those scores out, I mean, so it was like, we, I brought one score of our averages to the, to the table. So it was like, we only had one.
One, but absolutely, okay.
Yeah. But, but again, it was great that we deployed one point five million dollars here into Newport, and things are moving along, so.
And they were concerned how long it would take to sell the properties, but I knew they would sell fast.
Yeah, yeah.
I have one, sure, mainly a concern, the individuals that were selected to be part of your committee. Having someone from this table or, in case, city management, that kind of puts them at a disadvantage, because you're, I'm gonna say, you're all out of town, you're, you're not Newport people. But in a case like this, not picking on the city man, it could have been me or.
Sure.
That's not really, I don't think, I know it's for the city, but I don't think, in my world, that any of us in this table should be the ones doing the selection. Because, okay, I select, in the total write-up, you were selected, sorry about that. So here's a business now that, they don't really particularly like us right now, because we, you know, granted, it may be the way they put the stuff in, but in my world, I think we, we should have found a, another individual. It's just food for thought.
No, no, and I think it goes both ways. So we were trying to get representation locally, so we didn't get the other way. By the way, all you people from outside decided money for.
Well, yeah, so, and that way, there's no possible bias within.
Right.
This group here.
Sure.
And I don't know if the next set of grant, who you would pick, but in my world, it shouldn't be one of us sitting at the head table, because no matter what.
Sure.
If it weren't selected, we're gonna get the blame.
Right.
You know, and that's.
Completely, I understand. And, and then, and realize, right, I mean, that we could go and just keep it on agency level too, where it's like, that doesn't even have to happen at all, but.
I think it, you made a good point, because I think it eliminates any potential bias.
Correct.
Yeah.
Granted, you had all these different people reviewing it, which was your checks and balances, but it, it does eliminate a bias, a potential bias.
Sure.
It's just like, I would say.
And, and I say, that's why two out of three, though, is, makes a difference too, that it wasn't a strong. And we also discussed every vote and why someone voted that way. So people could actually, through that voting process, change their vote if they need, like, oh my God, I need to do that. So we did go through line by line as well.
But bottom line, up there, when it's put out there.
Oh, I get it.
There's just, those that don't get it are not gonna be happy. And I would just throw this out, next week, we're having a vote for the new commander of the VFW.
Right.
And over the last three years, I've consented, do not show a hands. Because if two people are running, oh, I voted for you, but I didn't vote for this one. This one wins, guess what?
Yeah, no longer your friend, he's not buying your drinks anymore, right?
Yeah, well, really.
I guess, no, it makes sense, yeah.
As the next round goes through, if you look at that, I'm sure you can find a fourth person or agency that.
Right. Yeah.
That's just in my world, yeah.
No, and I, it makes sense, and, and like I said, I mean, it's all those things to consider and trying to find, figure out, right, you want local representation or regional, so it's, uh, but like I said, I mean, I think at the end of the day, we have all these great projects and a lot of our businesses in town, I think, are happy. And I think some people learned some things too, which is always great, right? So.
Oh, great.
So.
Any other questions?
Am I saying something I shouldn't? I don't have my glasses on.
No, no.
It's, it's all public records.
Everyone's all public. I'm gonna, actually, it was, I'm gonna put you on the spot. It was these, it was Pam and, and Pam Vladz and Ann Schriller who asked the questions at public comment. So I'm just gonna kind of let them to see if he answered your questions.
Thank you. No, you didn't, but that's okay. I asked the question because when we heard that the grants had been awarded, and we were unaware of the process of the grants, we were given very little information. As I did some digging, it was still really hard to find information. Now, coincidentally, and I'm sure it's just coincidence, after it came, raised as an issue here and Mr. Manek agreed that he would be asked to come, it magically appeared in the paper, and since then, there've been all, all kinds of releases, wow. So, just bearing that in mind, we had not had information before, but magically, we have since then. But as I was digging, I found an organization called NEK DC, which I'd never heard of before, so I looked them up. And on the financial information that comes up, it says previous name, NCIC. And yet, you heard Mike Welch as one of your people sitting in judgment.
So the NEK Development Corp. is a private nonprofit development corporation, and I believe it might have stemmed out of NCIC, for use, but they are not, they're currently not NCIC.
Except the name, the.
And they actually do amazing things for the Northeast Kingdom here. I mean, they're, they're making a difference, they're doing major investments here in Hardwick and in St. Johnsbury.
I know what they're doing.
So they're doing really great things, and there was no, and I can tell you that the conflict of interest.
Was Dave Snadica.
No, but also.
Yes.
Excuse me, let, let's, one conversation.
But also, on, but on NCIC as well, there was, when we got to that point too, we had a person that was not Mike Welch, or it was from NCIC, was reviewing, and when it came to one application, they could not review it, and it was just up to Laura and I and then my colleagues reviewed that one grant, because they did recuse themselves from that grant as well. So we did follow that.
It just made it look like an initial conflict and clearly raised some issues.
Right.
What was the timeline for the RFP? And then the first phase, which was a letter of intent, and then the full application, what was the timeline?
So the timeline was, we had two that came out in October, there was two separate grants. So, one, they were both in October, one was really October, and the end of October was the two deadlines for the letter of intent or interest, whatever you want to say. And then it was the end of November and early December for us to decide who was being advanced. And then we went into, it was, it was late January, late December, that we actually decided.
So when did people fill out the second part of their grant application, phase two?
Phase two, the grant application, was they were notified at the end of November, when they had to fill out their full grant application.
So they filled out their full grant application as they were moving into their busy season over the holidays?
They're all worth, all fair and even, right, there's only, right, and, but we.
That's pretty hard for, for small business people to come up with a full grant application at that time. So when you talk about, I've written grants, I know what it's like. It's, it's a hard process, and you're asking people who run businesses.
Right.
To be able to come up with a pretty fancy grant application, which includes looking through all of the reports that we have sitting on shelves in the city at one of the busiest times of the year, when they've already had two years, two really crap years because of COVID.
Right.
Never mind all what went down before that. That was pretty high pressure for businesses.
It was, it was, it was five weeks we gave them to do this, five weeks. And we run grants year-round, and other businesses.
Grant writers to do that.
No, 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 we, I'm saying, no, we do this with communities all across Vermont and many different grant applications, and I hear you, I mean, you're right. I mean, there was a, I mean, obviously, the deployment of when we were asked to do it and trying to get this done. And it was, it was basically from October until early January, when the decisions were made.
The playing field was not level for some of the smaller businesses, truth was.
Well, and I apologize if that really wasn't the case, right, so.
So there were certainly concerns, I'm sure other people had concerns too. And it, it would have been helpful if.
But then there were some that did this and completed it, and so, and did a great job with it, so. I mean, that's all I can say.
And NEK DC certainly has grant writers at their disposal to write a really, who coincidentally is going to own that property, the city?
The Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation.
They will own it. How is that gonna benefit Newport? It's going to be rented to a Quebec company, right?
No, it's.
No, it's an American company.
No, that's an American company that is expanding in Newport. That, we had a whole presentation at this table. We had a whole presentation, and they're gonna be expanding jobs, it's gonna be kind of, well, I can say the green technology jobs, which hopefully will keep some of the youth who are interested in that in the community. But at the NC, I, I don't know all the acronyms there, but they're gonna own the property. Track, which is already here.
Right, I know where they are.
Right, they're gonna expand, and I think it's a win-win with what they were proposing. I mean, it's, it's, I forget how many jobs, the tax base, and.
Who pays the property taxes to Newport?
They will.
They'll, they'll, that, that private business, it's a private business.
Yeah, not every nonprofit doesn't pay taxes, so that's, that's a fallacy too. You know, I think some people misunderstand that, just because you're a nonprofit doesn't mean you're exempt from taxes. And they, they won't be, if I understand, it's a strict, strict criteria from, I call it PVR, another acronym, probably valuation, whatever, state.
Yeah, I think they want to pay the taxes, I get that, they want, they want that lens, right, so. Yeah.
But, no, having track expand is a win-win up there. And that's a property that, I'll be honest, from what I've been told, they're the only ones since the whole scandal broke, that's actually shown any interest up there. And they're a viable business already locally, looking to expand, and so.
And then, and then, that's also, I've heard, I mean, I think also, I mean, because my, my real job is business recruitment, which I, that they're actually, I probably would track some Canadian companies to actually co-locate with them, which is not an issue, that's a great thing for Newport to come to, right? So it's for people to bring their businesses down here and expand here and create jobs. And so, that's gonna be a bigger thing, is that electric vehicles, and it's gonna be a big sector here, right, so.
And actually, people think of what they make, it's not just for ski trails. They use them all down south in the power lines, I was researching, like, the Smoky Mountains, and, you know, they, they, they use all that equipment all over, so it would go all over.
But I do know the Northeast Development, but there are also the Yellow Barn in Hardwick, familiar with that project? That's another one they're deeply involved in, that's another gonna be a great thing for that area too. So I mean, they're really, it's like, yeah, it's only trying to raise the monies to, to do these kind of projects, right? So, but, you know, it is hard up here, I mean, actually, the conflict of interest with Northeast Kingdom is a small place. And so it's hard not to know who people involve, and then, in reality, is, is the, the decision. And so it's hard not to know who people involve, and then, in reality, is, is the, the decision above me to have a regional player is, those players are involved with so many projects, it's hard to keep them out of it, right? So we tried to follow the rule of order as much as possible.
Basically, it was the governor and your, the commissioner and the secretary who wanted the region.
Right, and which was great, um, but.
And certainly, after the EV5 stuff, we were gun-shod, because.
Correct.
Yeah, for all these reasons.
Did you have a quick one?
Uh, Lori Graham from here in Newport, um, I believe I heard you say that there's more money coming into.
There's money left, and there, and I, and all, and like I said, I don't know the complete facts, but I want to say, I believe that there is still money from the Stanger Fund that needs to be paid, that's.
Is it, is it possible that there's gonna be other grant opportunities based on that, or will there?
I think, well, this was the settlement funds, I think this was it, so I mean, there's always grant, and I want to say that Newport's done really well with a lot of the granting opportunities that we've, and people, the state has offered, federal has offered here, and, um, and again, all competitive, and it's done very well, um, uh, so I, I think there's, yeah, I mean, there always will be more grant opportunities. There's one coming, the big one right now is Northern Border Regional Commission, um, if anyone has projects out there, they're accepting the, the letters of interest right now with the deadlines, I mean, there's some really, some good capital there for some good projects here for municipalities and nonprofits, so.
And then, yeah, and that became much more competitive when they opened the, up the whole state.
Right.
Because it used to be the northern counties.
There's a lot more money, Senator Leahy was very good about getting some more money up for that program, so it's, it's, it's around eight million dollars.
Because we, we received northern borders for the Causeway Project.
Yeah.
And that's a good infrastructure, because that's really, it's good for infrastructure and businesses, both. And so, yeah, that's, uh, that's something that Leahy, Senator Leahy got originally for the northern counties and the.
It was, it was how it was set up, and then they made the whole state of Vermont.
Yeah, they changed it.
Senator Leahy's influence, I'm sure, was, that's great.
Yeah.
But I also say, I think the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economy Collaborative, did you, was there a grant that was just received there too as well, so.
The, uh, the Trail of.
Trail, yeah.
So, may I?
Chris had his hand first, and then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, who had the conflict and what project was it on?
The, the NVDA had written, was, uh, helped an applicant with the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation. They were helped that applicant.
So is the NVDA who had the conflict, or?
No, that, they, they decided that they had, we decided they had a conflict of interest, because they were helping that applicant with the highest priority project in the Northeast Kingdom, by the way, is that Wagner Building, so that's, that was the issue. So it was like, he had to recuse himself, he was decided to help put the grant together, but he could not review the grant, so.
So the applicant was the Wagner property?
Correct, yeah, the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, one more, and then we can.
Just so that we're.
He did say this was the hot seat, by the way, he told me it was.
This one should be easy, so if I'm a small business now, and, um, I haven't applied for any of these grants, I've been busy, um, working on, you know, making my business work, but want to apply for grants that are coming up. How do I find out, you just mentioned some, but how does a small business owner who's not here find out what business is, uh, is, what grants are available, and then what kind of help do you give that person? What kind of help do you give that person if they say to you, well, you know, I've never written a grant before? What do I do to get this going, because I have this project, do you, do you even think this project is worthwhile? And if it is so, then how do I get the help that I need? You know, I'm a one, sole proprietor, um, but I need help.
Sure, well, I mean, you know, the first thing is, what's great is the federal government, through the Small Business Administration, has a Small Business Development Centers, their job is to give free advice and business planning to small businesses. Within that, they actually can, they're aware of many loans and small, there's, there's a lot of different programs out there, depends on what your business is and when, when they're ready. It is, there aren't that many grants for private businesses out there, right? I mean, this was a unique one, because we actually decided to have a business competition, right? Um, but, uh, that, that would be the best advice, is to go to see the Small Business Development Center. Here, locally, it's a gentleman named Ross Hart, um, he's been doing this for years, he knows what he's doing, and he'll find out, hey, these, these are good programs that would fit, um, what you are looking for to do.
And it's located in Newport?
He's located in the Kingdom Newport and St. Johnsbury, I believe it's both, um, so I know he has an office here and in St. Johnsbury, so. But SBDC is, is referred.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, that's my best advice off the back, because I think you'll find out what's out there. But you also can go to our site, the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, there is a litany of different grant programs that can work, but, um, and then maybe sometimes it's actually combining with other businesses and through the downtown group here, and seeing what they're doing. And sometimes combining several businesses together, I think might go a little further with those kind of programs. Let's just get that, I don't know where you're located.
Mr. Walsh, who's connected remotely, could you please mute your microphone? We're getting an awful lot of noise here in the council room from your computer, so if you can mute your microphone, that would be much appreciated.
We'll send him a message, see if we can do that.
Thank you, by the way, thank you.
It's very informative, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, he did, okay.
Okay, great. Okay, good, that was very informative, and I'm glad, glad he came up to the council, and, all right, moving on.
I'd love to add one comment.
Yes.
Just to say, I think Ann's impression was super important about how people find out. And I just want to reiterate that, um, I met with Ross Hart like the second or third year of our business, back, it must have been like 2009 or 10, and he was super helpful, um, so that is, I just, as somebody like testimonial who went through his help, which.
Yes, he's been around, he's been around in the area for a long time.
He's seen everything, he knows what works, what doesn't work, um, and his job is to give free advice to small businesses.
And I do know they put it in the, I believe they had it, the, the, um, announcement, accepting grants was in the newspapers. I bet everybody gets a newspaper, but it was in the local papers too.
I, I think, I think it's, um, it is sort of, if you're not tapped in, it is hard to find out what's going on. I, I get, the NVDA newsletter is really good at compiling what grants are available, where you can get money, um, and you can just ask to get on their list.
Yeah.
The NEK Collaborative has been pretty good about compiling grants that are available, um, I, you know, so for people who aren't newspaper readers, um, you know, there's some digests to get, and maybe NCCD can do some of that too, um, so there are multiple places, but, um, you have to go look at them.
Right, right, okay, very good. Okay, the next item is an update, um, from the grandstand, on the grandstand. The council wanted quarterly updates, but we felt, the committee felt there should be an update sooner, just to give the council an update. The committee chose not to pursue a grant for the feasibility study, um, just like the structural analysis, they're gonna fundraise and pay for it. We actually have already received a corporate donation towards the feasibility study already, so, um, the RFP, RFQ is almost ready to go out. And if at some time whoever gets awarded that, to do the feasibility, um, needs access to the building, it would be, probably just signing off on the same form that was used for the structural analysis, is what, um, okay. The committee has set up accounts on the sam and grants.gov, federal websites, um, look, is actively looking to see what kind of grants could help offset the cost for restoring the historical structure. One thing that I noticed, and I actually took a couple pictures, I was gonna give them to the city manager earlier, is the, the back door is wide open to the building, and there's been people in there, I've noticed, I went down, saw a twisted tea can, I saw some other beverage cans, so people are accessing through that door, the structure, which is a little bit of a concern, not only for us, but for, I think, the safety for the city, because, because I took a peek in, into the dark doorway, and I noticed you can get anywhere into the structure, I think, from that back door, and I was just concerned that somebody might move in there too, you never know, and have someone move in and then accidentally get cold and start a fire and burn the structure down. So we would like to possibly see that that could be secured. And that's just an update right now, we thought we'd just give the council a brief update. Because at that meeting, we thought about applying for a grant to go for the feasibility, but we felt timewise, it would be easier just to do the fundraising and to go out and do like what we did for the structural analysis.
Is there a timeline when that feasibility study would become?
We haven't got the RF, we've been really coming up with the RFQ, RFP, and we had a sample sent to us, actually, it came from someone who, from NCIC, a sample of one that they had worked on for another feasibility study, um, in another community. So we're using that as a guide to come up with the criteria for the study, kind of like what we did for the structural analysis, you have to come up with criteria.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, did you say you had a corporate sponsor? Or corporate donation?
We had one, one donation.
Uh, from whom and how much?
They chose not to be public right now. I, you know, there are some people, when they donate, don't want it all over, all over.
At some point, would that become public record?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they chose, it's, I mean, but granted, the people who make donations are right, donations can remain anonymous if they so choose.
And how much was their donation?
Uh, I can tell you, it was, it was, um, let me think, we had another one, that was not yet, I think it was like 2,000, which is, you know, it's a good start towards, and towards the analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, the next item is the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Grant. We received a memo from the city manager, um. Okay, in order for us to move forward, I was just, I'm skipping it again, I'm, in order to move forward with the grant, a motion is required to accept and agree to comply with the conditions of the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities 2020 Project and appoint the city manager as the authorized representative, that would be the motion, correct?
Yeah.
And basically, this grant was in the, let me find it here, I'll just kind of summarize for everybody. The grant, um, was seventy, seven, seven, tongue tied, $7,612.50 and an in-kind match of $2,537.50. And this will provide for the hiring of a consultant, a consultant to upgrade the, update the existing plan. The hazard mitigation, that's all part of the FEMA, correct, the FEMA floodplain, FEMA, um, and so. If you want to give a little more, better than what I'm trying to stumble out, but I just.
Well, the last time it was updated was in 2017, and it's time to do it again. In 2017, the city had received a grant and worked with NVDA to update that, the gentleman's name was Paul Luciano, and I believe that he's still in the area, and, um, he may be able to apply for this, we have to put out an RFP as well. And, um, we, we need to have it, and it's gotta be done, I think I put it down, that it's gotta be done, uh, December 22nd, 2024. Because we have a plan in place already, um, I don't see that as being a problem to be able to meet that timeline. So the grant is from FEMA to the Vermont Emergency Management, who's awarded it to the city, under that Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities 2020. So filling out, um, this was basically here, because you did this in 2017, it's time for you to do it again, it was that simple. So now, what I'd like to do is, um, this is the actual packet, and if the council makes that motion, I will be able to authorize, as the sub-recipient, the grant award and also the notice to proceed. So these are pretty typical with this type of application, and it basically means I can issue the RFP right away and we can get started.
And this all ties into basically flood insurance, it's all part of the whole FEMA flood insurance, um.
Yeah, it is, because this is the, um, Expanded Community Report, and, um, that's exactly what it is, National Flood Insurance Program.
Because it does, there are some properties in town where there are homes that are within that mitigation area.
And it ties right into, um, your, uh, agenda item number nine as well, is also one of the criteria. So it really is flow, and then in a, a very soon meeting, um, Fire Chief John Harman will be bringing up the updated LMP.
Let's talk of that again, yes.
So all of this is tied into each other.
So we would need the motion down here, someone wants to read that, so it's for the record.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept and agree to comply with the conditions of the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities 2020 Project, and to appoint city manager Laura Dolgan as the authorized representative.
A motion been made by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
All second.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, we'll make sure that gets processed tomorrow.
Okay. The next item is Bylaw Modernization Grant Consultant Vetting Volunteer. And basically, the city was awarded a Bylaw Modernization Grant, the city council requested, is, uh, is requested to have a volunteer member in the selection process for qualifications. The selection committee is intended to be comprised of representatives from the city manager's office, planning commission, development review board, and city council. And so we will need a member of the council, um, let's see, it's going to, oh, the interviews occur the week of April 11th, and the consultant will be selected by April 18th.
Short turnaround, so if someone can do this, just, um, we'll need to be available next week, and it's probably, realistically, not more than six hours is what I'm gonna guess, and I always aim high, so that you won't be disappointed when it's quicker than that.
How many apply, I mean, how many put, um?
Do you want me to say that on the record?
Well, just, it's a number, not, not who it is, but just the number, you can say.
The number of applicants that we've received?
Yeah.
Two.
Just two, okay, no, that, that's, that's okay to say that, not just, not names or anything, just want to know, so it's not an overly, because by, modernizing bylaws is not really an exciting thing either.
What time is it?
It hasn't been scheduled yet, so we could do it, you know.
If it's a, a thrown in possibility?
Remote.
I'm out of the net for four days next week.
Chris is volunteer.
Chris, oh, okay, Chris just said he's out of, he's out of.
I'm out of the net for four days next week, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll be in touch with you.
Okay, moving on, the next item is, I, we leave, we left it on here in case council members had any questions on the capital investment plan. Just to refresh everybody, there will be a public hearing May 2nd, and also June 6th on the capital five-year investment plan. But I've been leaving it on the agenda, just in case council members, as you're thinking about it, or anyone has any questions.
I have just have one comment, I already talked to Tom about it, when you look at this, and we have this in plan, about five years from now to hit West Main Street, and I told Tom, if the last two more years, we're gonna be lucky, streets in pretty bad shape, so. I just, and I already told, talked to Tom about it, so.
This is only like a guide, it's not, it's, when it's approved, it's not really etched in stone, and if something becomes a higher priority, um, it can move around, so, okay. Moving on, the next item is the Annual Roads and Bridge Standards, we all received, um, oh, yeah, that's right, this is my copy, that's the other one. We all received it, um, it's to approve the, um, that we comply with the, with town and bridge standards. Any questions from council members on that?
No, I, we do this every year.
So we would, this is, um, certification for, uh, town road and bridge standards and networking inventory. And we would need a motion to approve it, and then we can all sign it, to also...
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vaschan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Pedersen, discussion on it? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Send it down by yours.
Is that the line?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, they're all, we all signed it.
I should actually read it before I sign it.
Oh, yeah, we've got the wrong date.
Up on the top, you got...
I'm going to write 22 on it. It should be May 2022. So I'm going to, right here. I'm going to, I'm going to handwrite on here, the 20.
Have you finished signing?
Oh, you didn't sign it?
I got, I got Melissa on there.
Oh, okay.
Probably people last seen. I'm going to want to change for next form two.
The next item is the Annual Financial Plan for Town Highways Class 1, 2, and 3 Roads, State Funds. And we received from, we received it. I'm assuming this is the mileage. So we have 6.637 Class 1, 6.64 Class 2 in miles, and 23.03, then it looks like 22.95.
We made a correction to the total list. Catterer Street, that used to be the city garage, was never taken off the state maps.
That's right.
Corrected that, that's why, did that little change.
Okay. Okay, so questions from council members? Looks like the total income is $1,967,060, and total expense is $1,967.60. And this just covers the paving of the streets, and it looks like, um, pretty much that's it.
Now, the, the 1, 2, and 3 classifications is, uh, as you see the numbers across, that's the funds that we receive from the state and law, which filters into our budget.
Questions from council members? Then we would need a motion, a motion to approve the annual financial plan for town highways.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the plan in front of us.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay. Moving on. New business. Is that them here? Mr. Mayor, are there any new ones? I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
I think most of them are, um, pretty old.
And I do believe they get vetted by the chief.
I think so.
Yeah, especially if they're a new one, he vets it.
Eyes on side, didn't see anybody there in there.
Ah, three of them. Guess I hadn't heard it before this time.
They have little copies on those pages. Should put little tabbies on those pages.
They're too easy.
Oh, sorry.
Gee, they all seem to come in at once this time. Usually they're... Usually they're found without.
Oh, they all came in today.
I'm going to just add one.
Yes. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, you're on that. Oh, you're on that one, okay.
Make it easier.
Dancing sales.
Keep it, hopefully, it'll make it easier. They do half these.
Yeah, that's probably why.
Mr. Mayor, this is, I'm just curious, as far as your concern, is there a difference in the class of licenses that you approve, or is it pass or fail, or in other words, they just...
These are liquor license renewal applications.
Right, I mean, is beer considered the same license as...
If you're serving wine and beer, you have to have a license, whether you're serving alcohol hard spirits. Right, liquor, they have to do two, we have to sign two of them. We have to sign two for, for liquor.
Yeah, yeah, that, okay, so that's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay, I just...
Yeah, right, so hard drinks is different than like beer?
Yeah. And some of these are for outside consumption permits, because some set up, um, tables out, out, outside, um...
Last time, we had to sign three for the VFW.
Is that true even for outdoor consumption, like the E signs has the pub in the back? Out of public view, you still have to, it's still, it's an outdoor, so it's not necessarily because it's a public view?
No, I'm just, I'm just curious. I'll let's tap it on the hill.
Eagles used to do, I think, two, and then, then have to stuff out front, that's another one they have to do. That's it?
You got it down. Pass them all back down.
In the same order, what were you saying?
Same order, very good. Anything else on the new business? Kevin, any new business? No? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I want to bring one new business up, and I guess it affects the city too, that's why I'm bringing it up. Last Friday, the 25th of March, in the Caledonian, they're talking about the VA, and all its wisdom was wanting to close the clinics up here in Littleton, Newport, and build a new one, bigger fancy one in St. Johnsbury. This clinic up here alone in 2019 had 832 veterans using it, 832. I read this, and Friday afternoon, I spent an hour talking to Senator Leahy, Senator Sanders, and Representative Welch. Time, I, I got a response already today from Senator Leahy's office, and, uh, I, I kind of let him know that if this is how you treat veterans, then you need to get out of the business. And I talked to them, just like I'm talking to you now. So, I got those three, and, uh, so, okay, do we want to lose that many? Oh, it's real great, we can send all our people back over Sheffield Heights in the winter and back if they have to see a doctor. I invited two of the three. Mr. Welch said, come on up here in the winter and drive over Sheffield Heights a couple times, and then may, you know. So I've got one response today from Senator Leahy, and, uh, that is, it's going to be about a year from now that the decision will be made. And she thought that by my really stirring it up, and I think I am, um, this was good, but that down the road, there'll be a, a period for public input, of which time I came back, so that's very nice. Only problem is the public never knows about when your input is. And, um, so then, I said, okay, who do I, who do I start trying to get letters written to whoever? So today was a good one. Legislative breakfast, the first one in about two years, and I, I got Senator Bobby Starr, Woodman Page, Mike Maricot, and Catherine Sims, and they all don't want to write letters, what's going to happen, that Bobby's going to write a letter from like the congressional people here, and they're not even going to mess with White River, because White River doesn't make the decisions. It's going to be, they're sending it to the one in Boston, which is the regional one, and then the one in Washington. I've hit two of the service clubs. Their mission is to take care of veterans, those letters are coming. The only one I haven't got yet is, um, the Legion, because Jim will be back on Thursday, and Thursday morning, he'll be listening to me, but I'm trying to generate enough public interest in this, because if no one ever does anything, all our veterans and all the older ones, some of them have a hard time even getting to the clinic here with transportation. So Senator Leahy's office, this was good. The more letters you can get, the better. Two of the senators today, of the towns you come from, go to their local boards, like right here, and every town that supports this clinic up here ought to be writing letters to the VA. So I've started up, the mayor is going to write a letter, I believe one's going to, we're going to generate one from the council here, because if we do nothing, it'll go away, just like everything goes away. And I, I reminded her that, uh, nothing seems to go away on the other side of the state, and we're the forgotten people, so she said, stir it up, Mr. Wilson. So I am going to stir up, but like I said, uh, the ones at the legislative breakfast this morning, most weren't aware of it. There's another one in three weeks, it'll be the other group of, uh, local reps and Senator Angles, and guess what? They're going to listen to this one more time, and I'm going to send them all to Bobby Starr. To make sure, just, I asked for a CC copy from the senator with all the signatures on it, but if you have veterans, you have parents that are using this clinic, somehow there's a name here for White River, we need to stir it up, because if we don't, we're going to lose it, so that St. Johnsbury can get a brand new one. So that St. John'sbury can get a brand new one. I also said, this is great, kind of like this building's here. You don't want to spend $6 million to fix the courthouse, but you'll spend $40 million to put up a new building. And I use the term disrepair. So we'll see what it, but why am I doing it again tonight? Because it's going to affect all of us in every town around here. But we also have other newspapers that Chris was unaware of it, and not his fault. But he's now aware. I'm going to give him a copy of this, if you'd like one. And then get it into the, because if we want to take care of veterans, and damn it, we need to get busy.
And the RI thing is, it's not that easy to drive from Littleton to St. Jay in the bad weather either.
No.
You know, so I remember when they opened this up, it was, the big thing was to keep people from having to drive all the way over Sheffield Heights, Moreno. That was the main reason they were opening this clinic up here.
Seven years ago, you were there, I was there escorting Senator Sanders around. This is the greatest thing in the world, and this is great. Seven years later, you want to close it? It's crap.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
I might suggest you contact the governor's office, as well as the lieutenant governor. And I'm saying the lieutenant governor is.
Can I call him? Well, I've called the senators, I guess I can call, yeah, I will. I'll also mention the other issue, but as you know, that's never going to happen. Taxes. Okay, that's all I had, but this is, I think, and the reason I'm bringing it up is because we all know people that have veterans, trying to get it in the papers, I can't tell them what to print. But if we don't do something, say goodbye to the.
This was a question raised to me today regarding this. Do we still have, like, does DAV still have the van that drives like veterans to? Like, because I used to take people to White River, I guess, and.
Honestly, I haven't called DAV yet. There are, there are offices in Bloomfield or something like that. So they're on my list to call.
Okay, I was just, yeah.
But I know, I've been asked a few times, do you know if anybody would like to drive the van? They have the van, but it's to find people to, to take people back and forth. Because it's, you take them down, you might have to wait for five hours and bring them back, so, yeah. But if we're going to take care of people, we need to.
Any other new wishes?
No. Oh, by the way, one last group. I even, we know our, I call them Budland bikers. Don't print that. Guys that walk around here with a skull on there are the motorcycle club.
Combat vets.
Combat vets. They are, they are, they're an organization. They're preparing a letter now. They already have this paperwork.
They had that big convention here before COVID.
The only bad part was yesterday at the breakfast, the VFW, it's okay. I've got here, and I've got the Legion and Orleans. Who do I talk to that runs the Legion out in North Troy? He was sitting right there at the table, but I didn't talk to him, Jeff Young. So I have his phone number. He'll be getting a call. But, you know, something we've got to do, or just like everything else, we roll over and the establishment sticks it to the Northeast Kingdom. That's all I have.
Great, oh, thank you. Thank you for that. I don't have anything new, anything.
No, thank you.
Anything?
No.
Okay. Old business, Mr. Charbonneau, Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have any. Well, the only old businesses, I see the gnomes went down. And I like you, I like how you moved the little gnome on the point there, the kind of way that everybody. So that was good. Good project. Any old business?
Yeah, I guess I sort of had the same kind of comment, that it was just really nice, sort of somewhat on the outside looking in, but it looked like it was just a really successful winter season here in Newport. And again, sort of, because you don't necessarily know the inner workings of things, but it looked like there was really good collaboration between the rec department and the public works department. And it showed. I mean, there was a lot going on, and things looked good, and everything from, you know, Christmas right on through. And I don't know if it was Mac or who that moved the gnome, but I just loved the whimsy of that, that little guy out there on the point. It was really cheerful. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Vaschan?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, the next city council meeting, we do not need item 14, which was the executive session. So the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, April 18th, 2022, 6:30 PM. And now we need a motion to adjourn.